PL 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so before we get started, Robert LaCour, Sammy Chabon, Jennifer Ragnar, Charles Brown, and Rebecca Hilbert all asked to be excused this evening. Councilman Emberson?
Here.
Edora Chase?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Mark Dancy?
Here.
Chairman Arcini?
Here. We have one resolution tonight that was the subject of a minor subdivision committee meeting. Uncle Gupta, PLN 2300023. I will let Mark summarize the findings of the minor subcommittee.
Yes, so as the chairman said, this was for a minor subdivision on Gerard Avenue. It's an R-15 zone. Both lots were in excess of the minimum lot size. Both exceeded the minimum lot width, and there weren't any variances requested. So it was under the jurisdiction of the Minor Subdivision Committee, which met in between the last meeting and this meeting. The Minor Subdivision Committee approved it, and we have a resolution for the Minor Subdivision Committee's consideration tonight. Basically, there were two conditions, one being full compliance with the TRC report, and the other being that the plans submitted shall be consistent with that reflected on the subdivision in terms of compliance with Chapter 222 trees, the limit of disturbance on each lot, and the planting of street trees. They basically made a commitment to disturb only a certain amount of the site on their plans, and the committee wants them to stick to that. That's the resolution that's before the Minor Subdivision Committee for their consideration.
And the only two people who can vote is yourself and Mr. Thomas.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Bob Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
We're going to go back and look at the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
From 6:5. Only Councilman Emberson cannot vote on those.
And do we have any comments or corrections on those minutes?
Ted already gave them to us, so we corrected them.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve, June 5.
Second.
Edora Chase?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes. We have one discussion item, relief of conditions for Birch Glen LLC, formerly known as Sycamore Developers. This is the 32-rot subdivision off of Cedar Grove behind Restus Gas Station. Similar to the one you heard for Sterling Point, there's a thematic consistency here, which is the water permit and the need to put three houses on wells. There is a minor difference between Sterling, but essentially it boils down to, you know, when the township gets the permit renewed for water capacity, and Vince is here to explain more of that. Or maybe Peter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Peter Lanford, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I will let Mr. Dominack explain the situation. I know he was here last month, and it is essentially the same situation that we had a month ago.
Yeah, if you remember, last month, I explained that the former Resta property, Birch Glen, we have a master permit with water that we're only allowed to allocate a certain amount of gallons for the development. Because of that, 29 of the 32 homes, we can allow to be hooked up immediately, and it may be that temporarily, three may have to be in wells. Most likely not, because by the time that they're built, they won't need to be, will have the master permit. But Township Council passed an ordinance. They asked for your recommendation last month. They passed that ordinance. The developer will be required, within one year of the master permit being issued, to connect to public water, if in the unlikelihood that they have to put the wells in. So the situation hasn't changed. This is the formal relief of conditions that you must approve, because we can't allow them to move forward with the water until the Planning Board approves the revised site plan, the relief of conditions.
Thanks, Vince. Any questions from the board?
It's three different wells, right, Vince?
They wanted three individual wells for three houses, which we would then abandon for residential use when the public water becomes available.
And what do you need from us? A resolution?
You just need to make a motion to approve the-- To allow the three wells, because the original approval was that the 32 units would all be on public water. So the motion would be to allow three of the units to have wells until such time as public water becomes available.
Second.
It represents a modification to a condition.
Okay, so we can go ahead with those motions? Okay. Councilman Emberson?
Yes.
Edora Chase?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Do you want me to read about Onyx now? Or no?
No, I'll do Onyx. So that's been carried. So this is the proposed warehouse across from Shopright on Old New Brunswick, carried to September 4, 2024. I made it clear that we're not going to hear that application until they can demonstrate that they have access through Old New Brunswick Road, because otherwise, they don't really have a plan. So we'll see what happens by September 4. I wouldn't exactly put it in pen on your calendars, but I'm just not going to hear it until they have access, because there's no point.
And just so, for the record as well, Mike, there has been a notice placed at Route 27 this morning by myself, just in case someone, I mean, we've put it on the agenda. It's been out on all of our sites, but there is a notice on the door as well.
Excellent. Thanks, Christine.
Is your mic on?
I think we should consider whether they need an agreement also with Buckeye Pipeline. There's an issue with the dirt that has to be bought in. Well, there's an issue, and it hasn't, to my knowledge, been agreed on, but that affects, has a huge effect on site plan.
Yeah, I think, I would suggest, I mean, I think the applicant was aware of those issues when it was brought up at the hearing. So I'd suggest we see if they come back in September, and those issues were raised, and they'll have to address them at that hearing.
Okay. So the one hearing we do have tonight is Mass. Church of God in Christ, PLN 2100022. This was before the Planning Board in October of 2022. You have those minutes, and in brief, it was carried, so they could look at some of the parking comments that the board had. They are now back, and so I'll turn it over to Peter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford, appearing on behalf of the applicant. You're correct that the last time we were here was in October of '22. Actually, as I started to prepare for this application and look through everything, this application was actually filed in 2017. So we've been at this for now seven years. Originally, when we filed the application, this property was in the redevelopment area, and churches were not permitted use in the redevelopment zone, so we couldn't make an application and had to have the redevelopment plan amended so that we can come before this board to get approval. In 2022, at the hearing in October, and I'll try to be brief, but just go through it, we presented the testimony of Mr. Sadowski, who was our site engineer, and I have Mr. O'Brien, who's going to, sort of as I'm talking, put up the exhibits that were put into evidence in 2022. The first one being the existing conditions plan, which basically shows the church on the right-hand side of the property, and there are, to the right of the church, 10 parking spaces, which are all the parking spaces that we currently have, and then there is a structure to the left of the church. This church was constructed in 1948. It is in pretty bad shape, and it also does not adequately address the needs of the congregation. There is a sanctuary and pews for church service, but there is no other facilities available for a pastor's office, for meeting rooms, or anything of that nature. What we did do is decide, the church decided to tear down the existing church and construct a new church to the far-left side of the property. Mr. O'Brien can sort of-- And that is the site plan that was presented at the last hearing. That's actually perfect, Mr. O'Brien, which shows the church being located to the left side of the property, the construction of a new parking lot with 38 parking spaces. The church itself was designed by Mr. Johnson, who was our architect. He's also here this evening, in case the board has any questions, but he did testify at the last hearing, and his testimony was that there is, on the main level of the church, a sanctuary and a balcony, and the total seating capacity at that level is basically 303 people maximum. There is also a lower level, which would be an area that's going to be used for classrooms for the children, and also for fellowship, for gathering of the members of the congregation after services. At that hearing, one of the trustees of the church, Or Payne, testified concerning the operations of the church, and how the church operated then, and how it will operate in the future. Unfortunately, since the time she testified, she has passed away, and that was part of the reason also. Took us a while to get back here, because we needed to have the church trustees reconvene to look at all sorts of alternatives that the board requested. But the church has services on Sundays. They have Sunday School at 10:00 a.m., and then the church services between 11:00 and 3:00 p.m. They do have some weekday evening activities. And those weekday activities are Tuesday through Friday. Ms. Payne testified that the average attendance was between 40 and 60 people. Some of those were Bible studies, some of them were meetings, but that was the average attendance. So there would be church services on Sunday, and then small groups that would gather on Mondays, I'm sorry, Tuesdays through Fridays. At the end of the meeting, there were discussions between board members and the applicant concerning ways that we can obtain additional parking. One of the things, and if Mr. O'Brien could just scroll that up a little bit the other way. There was an indication that we should inquire that the two lots behind the church, we should look at it, trying to acquire them from the township. The township does own those two lots. We did reach out to the township. The problem was that the township did not want to sell the lots. Well, first of all, they couldn't sell them to us. They would have to put them up for a public sale, which meant that somebody could buy those lots and put a house on there, and the township didn't want to do that, so they did not want to sell the two lots. There was also a discussion, if the board recalls, Councilman Wright lives adjacent to this property, to the left of it. He owns an undeveloped strip, which was formerly Camner Avenue, which was vacated by the township, and he indicated he would be willing to talk to us to see if there could be an accommodation to help us create additional parking. Our site engineer looked at it, and basically, there are some utilities in there, and that strip doesn't give us any additional parking, so there is no additional parking spaces that are available. So we're coming back to you tonight with the site plan being unchanged. However, there are some changes, some additional information, which I think is relevant in the board making their decision as to whether we can adequately supply parking for the church as it goes forward in the future. One of the other things I failed to mention, we discussed at the last hearing that across the street, and I can't read the street, unfortunately, across Booker is part of the RPM development, and the church had owned property where RPM is currently located. The church sold the land to RPM so that they can proceed with their redevelopment project. As part of that sale, the RPM agreed to provide to us 25 parking spaces to be available on Sundays to be used if they become necessary. So in addition to now the new plan, which has 38 parking spaces, we have an additional 25 spaces across Booker. On top of that, in December of this year, we reached an agreement with PNC Bank, which is on Franklin Boulevard, to allow us to park there on Sundays. I have a copy of the signed license agreement, and I would mark that into evidence.
I don't know what number we were on for exhibits during the first hearing so long ago.
I agree, and perhaps we just mark it A1 with today's date. I think that makes it easier.
And Peter, do you have a similar agreement executed with RPM?
There was, it was a contractual agreement I can provide to the board to get when I do represent RPM. I think that's a perfectly legitimate question, and I think if the board would approve this matter, you'd want an agreement with RPM confirming their obligation. I do have the contract of sale with me. I didn't represent either of these parties when this transaction was done back in 2007, but the contract of sale clearly indicates that when the church sold to RPM, that RPM would provide us 25 parking spaces. If you want to see the contract, I can give it to you, but I can get you--
As long as there's something written.
Yes, there is.
The agreement with the bank, does that allow for an accessible, walkable route to the church?
It is somewhat difficult, and our thought was that if, first of all, you'll hear the testimony of our traffic consultant. We probably will rarely need it, but if we needed it, what we would probably do then is, first of all, we would have to direct the people to park there, and then we would shuttle them over to the church, rather than have them walk, because it is a little circuitous.
All right. Pete, could you describe the term of the agreement with the bank?
The term of the agreement with the bank, it's a license agreement, which allows us to use the parking lot only on Sundays. It's a year-to-year agreement, which automatically renews on its own. If we didn't need it, we would have a right to terminate it. If the bank sold the property or something, they would have the right to terminate it. But as long as PNC is there, the term of it would be an automatically renewable agreement on a year-to-year basis. Paragraph 2 of the agreement indicates that.
Except that the right to terminate is with the bank at any time on 30 days' notice?
Sure, yes.
For any reason or no reason?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, just one more, just the agreement with RPM, so when RPM, when that development was built, there was some type of agreement with the church? And incorporated those 25 spaces into their site plan? Is that--
I don't know what was incorporated into their site plan, because I did not represent them at that time, but the agreement was there are 25 surface parking spaces available adjacent, or across the street from the church, and that we would have the right to use them on Sundays.
And do you know, do you happen to know, is that above and beyond the parking requirements for that site? Are they being shared?
It would be shared, and your ordinance provides for that. Section 112-98 indicates that if there are uses, such as churches, or theaters, or other things, that primarily operate on evenings or weekends, that they have a right to have a shared parking arrangement with other facilities that would not be necessarily operational at that time.
If this is primarily an apartment complex--
There's also retail there.
Okay. I mean, I do have information to present to the board that there are 25 spaces available at that time on Sundays?
I think, yeah, Mr. Trautman could testify to that.
Okay.
I have a question. Could you clarify the street that's Camner? Is it, does it flow through, or is it a, is there, is there an obstruction there?
Go the other way, Kevin. You're going--
The church will be.
Yeah, that's Camner. At one time, it went all the way through to Franklin, to Fuller Street. At some point, probably 10, 12 years ago, I don't recall when, the township vacated that portion where you see the line across Camner Street. They vacated that portion of the street, and that property was conveyed to the adjoining property owner, Mr. Wright. So Camner Avenue dead ends before our property.
And then it continues on, on the other side?
On the other side of Fuller, it continues on. I'm not sure if that's still in existence either. That may have been redeveloped. I'm not going to speculate, but it did, at that time, when the map was prepared, it did continue through across Fuller, as shown on the 200-foot radius map.
Okay, and will it remain undeveloped, that portion of Camner? I'm a little confused.
That strip of land is now owned by Mr. Wright.
Okay.
And he has a, as you can see, if you look at that strip, to the left of it is a house, and that's Mr. Wright's house. So that strip has become part of his property. And I think, if Mr. O'Brien can go down, yeah, and I don't know how far over we go to the left now. Yeah, so that's the strip of land that Mr. O'Brien just had his cursor on is part of Mr. Wright's property.
Okay, thank you.
To continue on, because I know you don't want to hear me talk any longer, I would like to call as my first witness, Ms. Edwards.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
Affirm, I swear.
Thank you. Can you give the board your name and address, please?
My name is Severina Edward, S as in Sam, E V as in Victor, E R I N as in Nancy, A, last name Edward, no S, address 304 Delian Court, North Brunswick, New Jersey, 08902.
You can have a seat, Ms. Edward. Ms. Edward, you are a trustee of the church?
That is correct.
Okay, and you heard my opening comments, where I recounted the testimony of Ms. Payne concerning the hours that the church operated, and the number of people that generally attended the church, correct?
That is correct.
And that testimony of Ms. Payne, as far as that is accurate today?
That is correct.
Okay, and at my request, did I ask you to do a count of how many people attend your church on Sunday at the present time?
Yes, you did.
Okay, and what month did you do a count on?
We did that in November of 2023.
Okay, and this is when you have services from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and can you go through the weeks and indicate how many people attended services?
Okay, on Sunday, November 5, approximately 26 people attended. November 12, 54 people. November 19, 39 people. November 26, 41 people.
Okay, and at the present time, your parking lot only has about 10 parking spaces, correct?
That is correct.
And those spaces with the people that come get filled up, and I assume the rest of the people park on the street?
That is correct.
And there is public street parking available around the site?
That is correct.
Okay. When we had the last hearing, the board asked us to, or asked the church to look at the possibility of making the church smaller. Did the Board of Trustees meet and discuss that as an option in dealing with this project?
Yes, we did.
And what was the result of this discussions of the board, and the Board of Trustees, and their sentiments?
At this time, we decided that for the, in order to allow for growth with our church downsides, then would not be an option for us, because at the present moment, we're not even able to perform some of the activities that we would like to.
Okay, and the, based on the new parking that we're proposing, and based on the current congregation, quite frankly, your new parking lot would be able to handle all of the attendees to the church on Sunday, which is your biggest day. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and also, Ms. Payne testified at the last hearing that you do have vans that are available to pick up congregants that need rides to church so that they don't have to drive. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that van service is still being provided?
If need be, that is correct.
And if need be in the future, if additional vans are necessary, you would recruit members of the congregation, again, to pick up other members and get them to the church?
That is correct.
Okay, now, the church didn't, at the request of the board, try to find alternative parking, and did arrange to be able to use the PNC site. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the church signed an agreement with PNC to use their parking lot?
That is correct.
All right, okay, and their parking lot's about a block and a half away, correct?
That is correct.
And if there ever would be a need to use that parking lot, would the church agree that they would transport the people that use that parking lot to the church, rather than have them walk to the church?
That's correct.
Does board have any questions for this witness?
Ms. Edward, typically, how many congregants are using the van service now?
At the moment, none, but if there is a need for it, they are available for use.
Ed?
Peter, I don't think you ever said how many spaces are available at the PNC Bank. Bank.
My, my traffic consultant will give you that information, but the answer is seventy.
Just a question on membership. So in the original submittal, it was indicated that the total members, I guess at that time was one-seventy-five, and that the anticipated total is two-hundred, and the worship area, you're proposing three-hundred and three seats. So, so you're anticipating growth up to that three-hundred and three?
That's correct. From any given Sunday, the numbers can increase. So in order for us to accommodate not just the numbers we currently have, but the growth that we are expecting, we would like to build a little bigger, yes.
Okay, so I think, you know, one of the things that I think perhaps the traffic expert will have to address is, and then you have the fellowship hall, but even just the worship area, three-hundred and three seats, the parking requirement is one, one space for every three seats. So you have a parking need of one-hundred and one spaces. So I think, you know, it's gonna have to be proven how that, with numbers, with specific numbers of how that's going to be addressed.
And, and Mr. Haley, if I may, as was discussed at the last meeting, Ms. Payne testified that the, the basement, which was for, is for fellowship, would not be used or occupied at the time that the sanctuary or that the services are taking place. That would be used afterwards. So I would ask the board when they consider the parking requirement. I know technically under the ordinance, you count all the parking spaces, but the actual need is based on the three-hundred and three seats in the sanctuary.
Do you have full access to the PNC parking? Is full, the?
On Sundays.
On Sundays.
Sundays, we have the use of the entire lot. PNC is not open on Sundays.
Understood. Is, is it a paid agreement?
Excuse me?
Is it a paid agreement?
No, they're giving us the right to use it as a license. We don't, thankfully, we don't have to pay them.
I have a clarification to ask Mark. Isn't there something that the parking spots is a proportion of the square footage of the area, as well as fifteen square foot?
Yeah, that was one of the comments, and I, I'm reading through the minutes. I don't recall if it was addressed at the last hearing. Yeah, if the, if the, if the seats are not permanent, like if it's not set pews nailed to the ground, it, then it's based on, it's one parking space for every fifteen square feet. Frankly, I don't recall if that number was provided by the applicant at the last hearing or not.
Now, these are fixed seats.
Okay, and what have been, but not in the fellowship hall. And that's, that's not gonna be fixed seats.
No, those are gonna be tables and chairs, right. But, but Mr. Johnson testified that the occupancy in the fellowship hall was about eighty.
Okay, but the worship area is all fixed seats?
So all fixed seats.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I have a question. So based on the numbers that Ms. Edward provided in terms of attendance, that average is out to forty-two. You're asking for three-hundred and three seats. That's over seven-hundred percent growth of attendees only, not total parish families that may be members but not attend. That is, to me, hard to believe just because you've been at this for seven years and there would be, I mean, if you haven't grown that much in seven years, what, how do we as a board believe that you would grow that much in the future and request all of these variances?
Well, I, I think there's a couple of things. One is, if you've been by there and see the condition of the church, it is not the most attractive church in its present condition, and it's hard to attract people to come to the church. Secondly, fortunately for Franklin Township, they have moved forward with a redevelopment plan. This area is being redeveloped. Many new residences are being constructed around this area, and also, we are not too far from Hamilton Street and the Hamilton Street Business District, which is also growing. So the, the church wants to be there for the community. This is, when I started talking to them in 2015, their vision is that, that as this area gets redeveloped, there will be more people coming in and hopefully more attendees to the church.
Well, Peter, hope is not a strategy. And I mean, as a board, you're asking us to assume that there's going to be a significant draw to this church from those residents, which may or may not be true. You've got a building that's being proposed that requires numerous variances that are far from de minimis. And I'm trying to understand how you're projecting this growth when so much redevelopment has already happened around that area. And the numbers you provided as testimony right here in the record just don't support that that growth is happening. If I heard, oh, you know, there's, there's forty-two, there's a hundred, there's a hundred and fifty, there's two-hundred, that would make me believe. I don't hear that.
Well, let me, and I'll call Mr. Johnson up too, because he's been very involved in, in the development of the site. But a couple of things. One, a lot, the building itself is in scale and proportion to the zone requirements and meets the.
How can you say that when you're requesting variances that are like not de minimis? You're going from fifty feet to five feet in setbacks and various other things. The impervious coverage is like eighteen percent over. It's not actually. I disagree with your testimony.
You didn't let me finish, Mr. Orsini.
Yeah, I don't like the direction you're headed, that's all new.
Part of it was driven by the fact that we tried to maximize the number of parking spaces on the site, and most of the impervious coverage is because of the parking. If the board wants me to take out the parking spaces to put more trees and more buffering on the site, you know, we could do that if we want to eliminate the variances. I think in the balancing act, and Mr. O'Brien's the planner, he'll testify, but it was our overriding thought was that we would rather request the variances to provide the parking for the people who attend the church and rather than provide, and we can provide additional screening, as was requested by this, by Mr. Haley, we can do all of those things. But, but most of this is driven by the parking and, and.
But no, 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 the parking is driven by the size of the building. If we, if we ask you to comply with, with the ordinance, you wouldn't even have room for a church to provide all that parking. I mean, you, you can't, you're using only a one-sided argument. It's a two-way street. Your building is driving the parking need. If you, if you demolish the church and build something more to scale, you could probably provide the parking on site, or maybe you'd need only one agreement or something like that. And I'll get to the parking agreements when you put your traffic expert on, but to say that it's, you know, it's being driven by the size of the building.
All right, I, I will, if, if the board has any other questions of Ms. Edward, if not, I will have.
I don't, I think I've, I think I've made myself clear. Go to your next one.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson? You testified in, in 2018, or, I'm sorry, 2022, and you were sworn at that time?
Yes, I was.
And you're still under oath?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to just indicate that this isn't the first church that I've designed.
Mr. Johnson, can you please speak up and into the mic because the recording secretary is not going to be able to hear you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Yeah, I've designed other churches around the state, and one particular in Perth Amboy. When we were approached by the pastor, he had two-hundred members. That was twenty-five years ago. We now have fifteen-hundred. We bought nine or so properties around the area. We've started other churches in Plainfield and in Asbury Park. We've done a similar thing in Union, New Jersey, in Newark, New Jersey. If the facility is there and the vision is there, it can happen. I've seen it happen, and I've been doing this since 1964. And it's not just a building. It's an edifice. The evidence of those other growths, I could present numbers and things, but I know it may not have anything to do with what you're voting on. But what I'm saying is that I have seen it where, yes, you start out with two or three hundred people and you end up with thousands. It's something that happens.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree with you. However, you know, again, there is, there is scale, you know, and you have to have the rights as a piece of property. You know, I can't speak to the other communities which you, to which you refer, and their planning and zoning ordinances. My oath is to Franklin, and so I'm going by the fact that, you know, our planner has identified a number of things, and then you have these, again, the parking agreements, which I'll leave to your traffic engineer to testify about. But, I mean, yeah, it can happen if, you know, you're gonna get carte blanche on, on all of these variances, but there's, there's a burden of proof there so that your planner, I'm sure, will address that. But I, I really don't care what happens elsewhere. I don't care what happens in Franklin.
I'd like to call Mr. Troutman.
I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Name an address for the record, please.
Jay Troutman, McDonough and Ray Associates, 105 Elm Street, Westfield, New Jersey.
Mr. Troutman, you also testified in, at the previous hearing, did you not?
Yes.
And since the previous hearing, have you been back to the subject property? Have you visited the surrounding areas and had an opportunity to observe the parking lot at the church, the parking lot that I referenced at RPM across the street? And also, are you familiar with the agreement with PNC Bank?
Yes.
Jay, before you do that, can I just ask whether or not your credentials have changed in any manner since you were last accepted by this board as an expert traffic engineer?
They have not.
Thank you.
He continues to be accepted. You may continue.
Thank you. So we, we did site visits, and we actually did a traffic and parking report back in 2022 and testified at the hearing as well. And then we revisited all of the findings from our original analysis, and it's all the same situation. I mean, I can go through a chapter and verse if you'd like, but basically, there is on-street parking around the site. The other thing that we talked about was that with the new plan, there will be additional curb face actually along this property that doesn't exist now because the parking space is back right out onto Booker. So there, there will actually be additional curb face created for on-street parking. And we also have visited the RPM property on Sunday mornings and found that indeed there are at least twenty-five vacant parking spaces at that site. The other thing, we've done studies of churches over the years, and the, the fellowship hall is not used simultaneous with, with the worship space. It's the same people, they just moved to a different room. So that would be a double count of parking to, to count that, to park that as well as the, the seating space. In my opinion, the, the seventy spaces that you gain from PNC actually accommodates full occupancy of that, that proposed space. As you heard, the space is proposed to accommodate growth, and, and I, I really feel that, that it would be, it would be most heavily occupied only a few times a year when everybody comes out for Christmas or Easter or some kind of other denominational gathering that might bring in people for meetings and stuff like that. So I, from what I've observed, I don't think the PNC parking would be used on a regular basis, but it would be there if they did need to fully utilize the space for larger holidays and events.
Mr. Troutman, I just want to point out in your testimony, so the, the one-hundred and one spaces are based solely on the worship use. Not, we're not, we're not even counting any space for the fellowship hall because the reason, our ordinance takes into account the fact that, you know, obviously, people are, you know, the fellowship hall is probably going to be used either for a, an event, and it, and the parking requirement would accommodate that, or people will be there for services and then go, go to that. So I just want you to be aware that the hundred and one spaces do not count the fellowship hall.
Agreed, yes. And, and just to give the number, what our total supply would be with the PNC, you would have thirty-eight on the property, you would have twenty-five close by at RPM, that makes sixty-three, and then the seventy at PNC brings you to one-thirty-three. So it's actually, you know, quite, it's quite fortunate that that's a large PNC parking lot. I wasn't expecting to find that many spaces there, and, and it does, in fact, fulfill, again, that situation where you have an event that generates that kind of parking.
Now, Mr. Troutman, as I indicated, the PNC parking lot is about a block and a half away from the subject property, as the crow flies.
Yes.
And to get from the PNC lot to the church, it can be walked.
Yes.
But based on the discussions with the church, would it also be your recommendation that if the board were to approve this, that transportation be provided from the PNC lot to the church as part of the church operations?
Yes, and, and Booker Street does connect through the back to get to PNC, so you wouldn't even have to utilize Franklin Boulevard.
So I have a question. There's no, no sidewalk on that street if you're gonna go from PNC. There is no, so they would have to cut across like field or they would walk on the street. There's no sidewalks there.
So I looked at that, correct, the, the, the direct route would be across the grass or the field. The PNC site is fully sidewalked. The RPM site is fully sidewalked, but there's one block in between that has a worn dirt path in front of the, the residences that are on that block between PNC and RPM. So there is a dirt path, a single file. I would say people are walking there now, but they wouldn't be in the street, but they'd be on a dirt path.
Yeah, that would be a little concerning, right, because to walk on that, that little portion of the street.
And that's why we're proposing to, to transport people rather than, you know, obviously, they would have the option to walk if they wanted to walk, but we would provide the transportation. And then in your opinion, on, as you testified, that the rare occasions such as the Christmas and the Easter or perhaps a big wedding where the sanctuary is fully occupied, in your opinion, with the parking spaces that we have been able to, would be able to create onsite plus the offsite parking, plus the additional on-street parking that we would be providing, we would have enough parking to handle this facility at full capacity?
Yes, and, and as a regular operation, Sunday after Sunday, all you would really need is the onsite parking lot and the on-street spaces along the lot frontage.
Unless they become very successful and, which we all.
Which they're hoping.
Yeah.
Then we go into RPM and.
So the reality is, they would use the onsite, then they would use street parking, then they would use RPM, and then the bank would be sort of the last resort, so to speak.
Correct.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
I think this goes to what I was saying before about trying to quantify this. So if three-hundred and three seats for our ordinance, that means you have to park a hundred and one cars. If thirty-eight onsite, and you quantify, you said on-street parking. How many on-street parking? Have you looked at the availability of on-street parking at that time of the day in the week? Yes. Same thing with, with the RPM site. Have you looked at the availability of spaces at that time of the, of the week? Yes. And so can you speak to that, please? Yes, on, on Sundays, RPM does have at least twenty-five vacant spaces in that lot. The other. Again, so is this based on, based on what? Your, your own observation? Yes. Yes.
Have you have you documented that in any way?
Yes, I mean, I drove through and counted up to 25 spaces plus that on my drive-throughs on on the Sundays I've been there. And then, uh, we did do an analysis of the, uh, on-street parking. Uh, on Fuller Street, between Booker and the new parking lot driveway, you would have room for two cars. On Fuller Street, west of the new driveway, you would have room for another three. On Booker, where we're closing off those spaces that back into Booker, you would gain another five. So that's that's 10 spaces right adjacent to the property on the street. And then as you move further out, um, I will note that Fuller, between Booker and Franklin, has been full of cars every time I've been out there, so I put that as a zero available. Uh, but if you look at Booker between Fuller and Somerset, you could gain another 15 per side on that, that'd be another 30. And then as you work further out, um, Booker to the north of the site has both sides available for parking, and Fuller on the south side across from the site has available parking, and then Fuller further west has parking, and then you would be to Camner.
And and just. It has parking. What how many are they available at that time of the day? I mean, I I'm sorry, but you're giving a lot of just very unspecific testimony here.
I I gave you specific.
You're you're reacting, but this site needs 101 spaces. Respectfully, I think there needs to be testimony, okay, here's 101, we're going to be meeting, we're going to meet it by this, you know, we're going to have this this much here, this much here, this much here, we have this agreement here, we we looked at this, these streets, and these streets have this much available par- I'm hearing this space, well, it it there is parking there. How many? Break it down for the board.
He just did. I gave you numbers.
I didn't hear, I I heard two spaces here, three spaces here, and then then I heard a bunch of unspecific information.
Then you didn't hear the five I said on Booker, the 30 I said on Booker to the south of Somerset and.
It would've been nice to have some of this ahead of time rather than having to react on the spot and have to add this stuff up in our head as opposed to, I mean, some of these questions were raised two years ago. It would've been good to have something in writing ahead of time for the board to look at and be prepared and to ask questions on that rather than having to react on the spot.
So so one of the things I was going to ask our attorney to comment on was how the board should regard third-party parking agreements. Um, so I'll let Jim talk about that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before that, I think the witness has testified with regard to 10 spaces, uh, that'll be added because the curb space will be created. But I don't know that we heard any quantification of the availability, specific number of on-street parking on the other streets. I'd like to know how many visits you made to draw your conclusion and when you made those visits.
Sure. Uh, my first visit was April 3rd, 2022, before the last hearing. Um, I have, I I don't remember the specific dates, but on other occasions when I've been through here on a Sunday, more recently, I've made visits to confirm the numbers that I just gave. And I did say, uh, on Booker between Fuller and Somerset, on all occasions, completely empty. It fits 15 cars aside, that's 30 cars, completely empty on a Sunday morning on all occasions that I've visited. And I did move further out and again observe, I also said Fuller was full, so that was a zero. I mentioned that number as well, so I'm not counting any of that. Beyond all that, if you just take the 38 plus the 25 with RPM plus the 70.
They are both terminable, which means that they could be terminated by RPM or by PNC Bank, and then you have a situation where those parking spaces that the applicant is relying on are no longer available. You have to decide whether or not that can represent a substantial detriment to the public good and to the neighborhood of people competing for parking spaces.
Mr. Clark, and I disagree with your statement only to the extent that the parking spaces at the RPM site are not terminable. They're part of a written contractual agreement that we are entitled to use those spaces, and I will have provide the document and have it recorded, which will indicate that we have a right to use those spaces.
Based on what I have in front of me, that's why I said what I said. If you can provide me the agreement, I may modify my statement.
Okay. Uh, second of all, and I sort of alluded to it, uh, before, the Township Ordinance, Section 11298 indicates that off-street parking facilities for one use shall not be providing the required parking for another facility, except that one-half of the off-street parking space is required by by any of those uses whose peak attendance will be at night or on Sundays, such as, but not limited to churches, theaters, or assembly halls. So your ordinance does allow us to use the off-site facilities and have them counted as our parking spaces. It's not something that, you know, we just made up and said we want to use them. Your ordinance gives us the right to use those off-site.
Well, it doesn't give us, it gives you a right to use PNC, that's the agreement it's striking. It gives you, excuse me, it gives you a right to claim the off-street parking that you 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 just cited in the ordinance. So let's be clear that the RPM and the PNC don't count in that ordinance or in that provision of that section.
It does count.
No, it doesn't. It's the off-street parking that counts, right? You're talking about uses. The ordinance can not possibly anticipate third-party agreements.
The the ordinance does anticipate that we can use off-street parking on other sites and count them as our parking spaces. If if our church got busy now and we have an agreement with PNC and.
PNC's closed, right?
It's it's closed on Sundays, okay? And I we tell our congregants, go to PNC, we'll pick you up and bring you to church. We don't need this board's approval to do that. Your ordinance allows it.
Okay.
It's a matter of right.
But the concern I have, and Jim outlined it quite clearly, more with PNC maybe than with RPM, I think, you know, is there a chance that RPM could go away in the future? Yeah, probably, but I mean, unlikely, right? It's those are apartments, it's unlikely they're going to be raised and you're going to build a warehouse there. So.
I'll try.
So, um, but PNC and other third-party agreements, the way this board is treated is we have no ability to enforce that. And in the very document you've given us for for the PNC agreement, it says either party can terminate within 38 days for any reason or no reason whatsoever. So it is hard, it is impossible for this board to enforce that. We're that to go away, and you're claiming 70 spaces. I I can't, I can't enforce that, we can't enforce that as a board. We can't even put it in a condition because the you would be you would be unable to even comply with that condition.
That's that's not necessarily true. You can put a condition in that if for some reason the PNC agreement, uh, goes away, we have to find alternative, come back to the board and provide proof that we have alternative off-site parking, or we may then have to restrict our occupancy if we can't provide the parking. There are ways you can control it.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, that's awfully hard to enforce. Uh, what am I going to do, you know, send send a zoning officer out to like shut you down until you find that parking? I mean, you're you're getting into faraway land here. The way the board addresses these matters is through planning and zoning compliance, which you don't have. And there's what I'm trying to bring out is if you constructed a smaller building, nothing that nothing against this congregation, nothing against this church, churches are great use for that zone and for the whole redevelopment zone, and I want to approve a church there. But it's very difficult for this board to look at all those variances and the size of that church and the testimony that you've provided in the number of attendees of the congregation that over seven years does not seem to have changed appreciably, that, you know, and and the unenforceability of third-party agreements by this board to to just wave all that away. I can't do that.
Well, a couple of other points. This board approved a couple of years ago a church on Hamilton Street. It was a Hispanic church, uh, converted an existing building to it. It had basically a similar situation with some small parking lot adjacent to it, and then negotiated for off-site parking across the street, uh, in the building that, uh, has the senior affordable housing. They have the right to use that parking lot. That church has been there now probably 10 years, never had a problem. And it's a similar type situation. It's a it was a small Spanish congregation, it came out of New Brunswick, and they provide, and they testify to it, they provide van service for their people to come there, uh, and it has not created a problem for the church, it has not created a problem for the adjoining, uh, property that they share the parking arrangement with, which was allowed, nor have they created parking problems on Hamilton Street. And again, they're they're only open on Sundays and and evenings, but it works.
Oh, okay, and you're only referring to the parking. Did they have, you know, a laundry list of variances as well?
Uh, they.
I mean, I don't remember the application, so I would look I would look that up.
My guess is it was probably before the zoning board because I don't think churches were permitted on Hamilton Street. I don't think you may have heard it, but.
Different, different, I don't remember, but I don't remember every application.
But yeah, there were variances because, again, we did not have enough parking on site, and that site was basically 100% impervious. There's there's no landscaping, there's no anything, uh, but that's the way to, and the other thing, uh, Mr. Chairman, you got to understand, I mean, we can provide additional buffering and everything, but a lot of the intent of the ordinance to provide buffering and screening is in situations where you have a house of worship that's surrounded by single-family residential dwellings, uh, such as we've had on the Jane Center, on Cedar Grove Lane, we had on Inanda Mandir. This is basically an inner-city situation. This is not the same, and and your ordinance is is not a one where it fits all, that's why you grant variances. I mean, here, you have township land behind us that they don't want to sell.
When we grant variances, when the burden of proof is, you know, presented that we believe.
Yeah, and and we haven't done.
It's not carte blanche just because it's before the planning board, but it is a residential neighborhood, and and there are residences around that church, and and there's some vacant lots, I mean, I've seen the area. Um, it's not, it's not, you know, surrounded by commercial or industrial uses exclusively.
The 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 area behind the church is owned by the township. We tried to acquire it, they won't sell it. So you want us to buffer the township land from, yes. I mean, again, we can do it.
Well, they may sell it someday, I mean, it is zoned for, I believe it's probably on R7 or R10 or something like that or or whatever. But I mean, it it's possible that it could one day be residential, it's unlikely it would ever be anything else. So I mean, I think we would want to anticipate that, we would want to buffer that.
Yeah, and and we can, but but my guess is it probably won't be because if if the township was interested in selling it to us, uh, as even, I think it was Councilman Chase at that time was the one who was sort of pushing for it, they probably would have put it on the market so we could have acquired it and provided additional buffering and screening, but it didn't happen. And and.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, I wish it did because, I mean, there's like, you know, you said earlier, there was maybe a chance that somebody would, uh, put in a bid for and construct two single-family homes there and the church wouldn't get it. But, you know, it it's it's a what if. I mean, it would've been nice to have the church have that opportunity.
And and we tried to do that. Again, we and and the other thing is, you know, where where's the magic line? You know, we do have enough parking, at least in our opinion, based on the testimony. I mean, you know, you're you're saying, well, the church is too big. If if I have a house, or I want to build a house, and it's it's me and my wife, and I want to build a five-bedroom house, is somebody going to tell me you're building a house that's too big for you? You don't need it.
Well, if you do it on a on an R10 lot, you probably will. If they grant that, then, you know, there's something wrong with the planning and zoning department.
I mean, assuming we can justify it, I mean.
I mean, I'm not going to pull it down a Beverly Hills mansion on my 1 acre lot. Somebody shouldn't allow that. Now, could I go for all these variances? Sure, I could. Could it be done? Yes. Should it be done? Is it a better plan or alternative? I doubt it.
Again, the, let me, let me just get the number. The building coverage requirement in the zone is 30%, and we're at 19%, so the building is not in variance. You got to understand that.
Well, the building is in variance because of the setbacks that are being required.
The setback, yeah.
It's clearly large, larger than what the ordinance allows.
No.
It's a it's a allowed 1 acre, you got 0.57, so it's.
Right.
It's about, we're less than 60% of what it should be.
And and again, we attempted to acquire the additional land and can't get it, but the building itself, again, if we move it to the other side, i- if if we move the building to the corner of Fuller and Booker, then we we would not have those setback variances, we'd just lose parking. And we talked about that at the last hearing. If we if we flip that building to the other side, to the corner, then we would meet all the setback requirements, but we would have less parking, and I don't think that makes any sense. But if you want us to move the building over, I can talk to the congregation about moving.
Well, I mean, it's a smaller building, is why.
It's not really the size of the building. I mean, the size, this is a residential zone, so I think the 30% building coverage is anticipating that it's, I mean, the primary use of this of this zone is residential homes. You know, so, you know, the the size of that building in relation to the size of the lot is not too big, it complies. It's a function of the use.
Yeah.
This isn't a house. This is a a house of worship where you're going to have 303 seats and a fellowship hall, and the parking needs that come with that use. It's so it's not the size of the building, it's the use and the number and the and the fact that it's going to be an assembly use with a lot of seats in it. And again, what comes with that is a large parking demand.
Yeah.
I do have a issue getting back to the to the parking a little bit with with PNC Bank, because I am not comfortable with any comments coming back to the board that say, well, if we lose the right to use it, then you bring us back in, you make us prove we have the parking, or curtail the services, or cut down the operation, because three or four years down the road, that doesn't work when people are are used to doing something. PNC Bank does bother me a little bit because it can be gone in a heartbeat. In the years I've lived in this town, there have been five banks there. Every one comes with a different manager, a different philosophy, that's all you need. I'm not saying that it it can't work, but it is a concern.
But but, and I understand that, Mr. Thomas, but your ordinance allows us to count that toward our parking requirement. That's in your ordinance. It says I can count off-site parking spaces towards my parking requirement.
The other thing regarding the parking is, can you can you give us a little of a little bit of an idea how far we're moving out away from the church when we're talking about the on-street parking? Uh, you said Somerset Street, 15.
Yeah, let me go over that again, just because, um, I I just realized in my numbers, if you don't even count P O PNC, we have 103 parking spaces that are within a block based on my observations. And the way I get there is, I already told you about the 10 spaces immediately around on-street that are going to be created. So we have 63, the we have the the 38 on the site, the 25 RPM, that's 63, plus those 10 is 73. And then what I did was, on the block of Booker between Fuller and Somerset, I took a.
on the block of Booker between Fuller and Somerset, I took a measurement of that. It's 330 feet. If you divide that by 22, that's 15 cars on each side, and it was empty. There wasn't a single car parked there on a Sunday morning, not one. So that's, that's 30 parking spaces right there in that block. And it would be similar to what I observed at the Baptist Church across Franklin Boulevard. If you look at the Baptist Church, all the cars park on Fuller. They fill up all the streets on Sunday morning at the Baptist Church. Well, I don't think this will ever be that, but it's the same idea. The same thing is happening in the neighborhood right across Franklin Boulevard.
That provision actually means a little more to me than, than the PNC Bank, as long as we're not getting so far out away from the church that it's not reasonable to think that people are going to walk it, or if there, you know, there needs to be some sort of reasonable chance that the walk is doable, you know, out in the middle of the street, you know, things like that.
I agree.
I just want to point out that Section 112-98 does not permit an applicant to count on-street spaces. It makes a particular point of allowing, in certain cases, to allow off-site. If the ordinance, if the drafters of the ordinance wanted to do that, they would have done it, and I've seen it in other towns.
Yeah, and I didn't say that 112-98 had anything to do with on-street parking, but Mr. Troutman has testified that there is on-street parking available as further consideration for the board. We didn't count it. What we counted was the PNC site, what we counted was the RPM site, and our site, which we believe we are entitled to count pursuant to the ordinance.
I'm going to give the board my interpretation of the ordinance, that unless you have an agreement that is absolute and is not terminable, the board has the discretion not to count those spaces. Because they can go away tomorrow. In 30 days, strike that.
Well, again, I don't, I don't think that applies to the RPM site. I don't, I think the board can put in their, in their resolution conditions to make sure that we, if we don't have that space at PNC, that we would have to find alternative off-site parking, which I don't have a problem with.
I would reverse that, and I would, I would, I would require you to show me that you have parking in perpetuity, because you're putting the burden of proof on the board. I'm putting it on the applicant, because it's your application. You have to prove that you have the parking in perpetuity. I don't have a problem with RPM, a problem with PNC. PNC becomes a McDonald's tomorrow, you don't have that parking.
Then, then somebody needs to change yours, because the ordinance allows me, the ordinance allows me to count it.
The ordinance, I just heard from my attorney, and I'm comfortable with what he's saying. We can count it if it's in perpetuity. If it could disappear within 30 days for no reason at all, PNC just wakes up on the wrong side of the bed one day and says, you know, no.
If, if it was the intent of the ordinance that those parking spaces off-site had to be in perpetuity, it would say so. It doesn't say that. That's not what the ordinance says.
I think a reasonable interpretation of the ordinance can be made by this board.
I, I, I don't, I don't agree with that, Mr. Clark, but again, you'll advise the board and-
And I think some of the language of that, of that section is important, is it says, "Off-street facilities for one use shall be constructed as providing the required facilities for another use," et cetera, et cetera, "may be assigned to use which will be closed at night or on Sundays." Says that may, not shall. So that, so that, I think that's a key difference. If it said shall, then I think Mr. Landfritz's language that they have the right to use it would apply. This is saying may. When I see language in ordinance where it says it may be assigned, that's, that's a discretionary judgment-
Yeah.
-that in my opinion is done by an approving board. Who else makes that, who else makes that decision that it may be assigned, other than either a zoning officer or an approving board? An applicant doesn't make that, doesn't make that. An applicant is given a right if the ordinance says it shall be assigned.
So are you saying, Mark, that if I decide I want to use PNC Bank now, that I can't use it? Or I have to come to the board to get permission to use it?
Not with, not with the new church, right now. What I'm saying is, the language is saying that if you prove to the satisfaction of the board, the board may be convinced that you can use, you can use those spaces towards your parking requirement. That, that's the statement I made. If that's not, if that's not your question, I, I didn't understand your question, but that was not my, that was, my statement was, that's what the ordinance says. It may be assigned, and the board has the judgment whether to assign it or not.
Why don't we do something the other way for once? Applicants suggested, you know, take our word for the parking and everything is okay, and if it doesn't work out later, bring us back. Why don't we say, ask for the applicant to reduce the number of fixed seats to 200. You don't have the need for them at the moment. If you find you might in the future have the need for them, then you could come back and demonstrate how the site is working. That if you use, reduce the 100 seats, you're losing parking, your parking requirements are going to drop by, what's?
30 some.
Enough spaces that between the on-site parking and the RPM site, you practically have enough, have it covered. And then if the, if the use demonstrates it in four or five years, then you come back here and say, here we are, we need this, and then maybe land will become available somewhere else.
Are you suggesting, Mr. Thomas, so I can understand your position, that we can build the building, but restrict the number of seats within the building?
That's my first thought. I don't know how it flies with planning and Mr. Clark and, and the parking requirement, but it does reduce the parking requirement.
It does, but it doesn't answer the question of the size of the building. The applicant still has to have its proofs to justify the granting of the bulk variances for setbacks and for lot coverage.
That's understood. Can-
Impervious coverage. Lot coverage is the building. The variance is for impervious coverage.
Yeah, the variance is for impervious coverage. That's correct.
Yes.
I just like to observe that we're arguing everything assuming the building is fully used, despite the fact that the chair has speculated that he doesn't expect that the building will be fully used, at least within quite a number of years. And the applicants are saying, we need a bigger building in order to encourage the church to grow. As possible, if the church grows to that extent, they might build another bigger facility somewhere else. I go back far enough to remember when there was a church started at a house on West Point Avenue, and the zoning board denied the permission to use that for a church, and it went all the way to the State Supreme Court, which said, yes, we would have to. And they subsequently built a much bigger, a big building over on Franklin Boulevard. So that's another thing that can happen. I think Mr. Thomas's suggestion is an excellent suggestion. I was thinking myself that it would be nice if you could design the building, and sometimes for some purposes, if not for churches, this is done, but out smaller, but designed so that the building can be extended if they use, of course, you then need all of the, the setback variances, but I observe that if we have a 50, 50-foot front yard setback and a 30-foot backyard setback, that only leaves 20 feet in the middle for a building. So a variance is, I think the only thing you can really argue about are the side yard variances, which are very small, but the side yard is toward the vacated street, not towards another house.
That's correct. I, I, I think Mr. Thomas's suggestion is, and I think Dr. Chase's may be a little bit different. I think Thomas was sort of suggesting we build a building, but limit the occupancy, and Dr. Chase is suggesting we build a smaller building and then expand it later if necessary.
I think Mr. Thomas's suggestion is better.
Okay.
Particularly since the parking is based on the number of seats.
Okay.
So if the number of seats are reduced, the parking requirement is reduced, and I see members of the audience nodding approval.
I, I, I have, I think I would like a brief recess to talk to the members of the congregation to see if there may be an interest in discussing that further with the board.
10 minutes, okay. We can meet at 9:00, or do you want any more?
That'll work.
Okay. We're in recess till 9:00 o'clock.
We're in recess till nine o'clock.
And I'm only a minute late, so it wasn't too bad. When I was in school, I was a lot later than that. Mr. Chairman, based on the input of Mr. Thomas and Dr. Chase, we want to look at perhaps reducing the seating within the confines of the building and perhaps making the building a little bit smaller so that we can increase some buffers. Mr. Healy indicated that, you know, we don't want to do this on the fly either, so that if we do modify the plan, we'd like to get it to you ahead of time so that you have something to digest by the time we come back.
Yes.
So I think at this juncture, I'd like to have this matter carried, not for a year and a half, but hopefully, I think...
Carry with no further notice?
Carry with no further notice.
We'll have Christine read out whatever you guys decide once you figure it out.
Probably, hopefully, we can be ready by September.
So we have September 4th is not available. September 18th are matters that are yours, Gouda, 500 Atrium and Concord. If you want to move all of them and move this there, that's your prerogative.
Why don't we move this to September 18th? Hopefully, we will be ready by then, and if not, you know, we can keep one of those other matters on. Actually, one of them, Detention, may be acquiring some land. So why don't we move it to September 18th? And we'll try to get something together by Mr. Johnson to give at least a plan to the board by the middle of August. Middle of August, a month. You're not allowed to have a vacation. All these people are waiting for you.
I'd suggest you give it another month at least.
You want to do it the first meeting in October? Is that open?
No, it's not.
Anything close? Well, I still think September 4th is going away, but that's just my own opinion. I guess we can't rely on that.
Yeah, but we may not be ready.
But we can't plan on it.
Yeah, no.
The next available one is October 16th after that, so...
All right. Let's do October 16th, which gives Mr. Johnson some time and also gives the congregation some time, and hopefully, we'll get the plans to the board and give them some time to look at it.
Yeah, the plans will have to be given, Mr. Johnson. They have to have at least three weeks to review, and I have meetings with the staff every Tuesday. So just keep that in mind so that, you know, and the packet has to be ready a week before the board meeting. So we're looking, if you want to come on October 16th, I should have your plans by September 16th. Just think, you know, think along those lines to give them, the staff, enough time to review everything. Is that reasonable? Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, so then this matter, Macedonia Church, docket number PLN 2100022, will be carried without notice needed. This notice will be verbal now, and it will be on the agenda that's placed on the website to October, what did I say? October 16th at 7:30 p.m. in this building.
Thank you very much.
With no further notice required, so if you're here for that, which I'm pretty sure everybody is, well, we'll hear it then. And thank you for listening to the board and considering our feedback. It's our intent to try to be helpful, not to beat anyone up. But, you know, I know you've done this long enough, Peter, to know that, you know, the planning, the planning law and the stuff that we like to see, and so appreciate their consideration in that.
We always try to take the board's concerns into consideration. Sometimes we agree with them, sometimes we don't, but we'll see what we can work out.
Sounds good.
I need an extension letter, Peter, in writing for whatever you want to give me.
I will put it on the record right now, but I will send the letter for the record. I will grant an extension of time through October 31st in this matter, and I will do an extension letter for you.
With noting. Any other business, Christine? If not, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Stay cool.